Okay. I didn't see the dash. All right, hello, it is 5:00 PM on Monday, September 8th. This is a regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are myself, President Bumpas, we have Director Barnes, Director Campbell, Director Excorn, Superintendent Sean Woodward, District Leadership Team, School District Staff, as well as members of the community. Director Whitfield will not be in attendance with us this evening. Members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link attached to tonight's agenda that is found on the Board Docs website. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's meeting. We're happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters, there have been previous discussions on these issues either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions, and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, his staff, or through outside research. Those wishing to address the board during public comments must turn in a public comment form prior to the start of the meeting at 5:00 PM. Any form submitted after the meeting has started will be held for the next meeting to address the board at that time. And moving on to Agenda Item 2.05, approval of the agenda, is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the agenda dated September 8, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the agenda dated September 8, 2025. All in favor, raise your hand. The Agenda Item has passed 4 to 0. Moving on to Agenda Item 3.01, we have the Oath of Office for a New Student Representative. All right, Rena, can I have you meet me at the podium, please?
Thank you.
Hello?
Okay.
There it is. All right. So you just repeat after me.
Okay.
I state your name.
I, Rena Shaw-Woldman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the State of Washington.
And the State of Washington.
And will faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
The duties of the student representative.
The duties of the student representative.
Of Monroe School District Number 103.
Of Monroe School District Number 103.
In the County of Snohomish.
In the County of Snohomish.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Awesome, thank you so much, Rena, welcome! Yeah, let's take, are you okay with it, Rena? Awesome, let's do it. Shame's wants to stand. Okay, welcome again, Rena. Excited to have you here. Myron should be here next meeting, and we will all connect with you. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 4.01, we have public comment. "We welcome and value public comment on educational issues and recognize the importance of the opportunity for members of the public to express their thoughts to the school board. It is a policy of the Monroe School District to promote mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct among district employees, parents, and the public. We kindly ask that you refrain from comments that violate school district policy. Individuals are asked to limit comments to three minutes. A designated speaker for a group is asked to keep comments to five minutes. If you have a personnel concern, any staff member in the room can help with how to go forward with a complaint about personnel. The board does not respond to public comments during the business meeting. Please note that the board's silence is neutral. It is neither a signal of agreement nor disagreement with the speaker's remarks. The president may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement when it is personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, targets a protected class, or exceeds the time limit. As the board president, I will determine the appropriateness of all such rulings. When I call your name, please step up to the microphone."
Okay.
Corinne? Hey, Corinne, can I get your full name and then your relationship to the school district?
Yeah, my name is Corinne White, and I'm a parent of a student who is at Frylands, but she was at Frank Wagner. Okay. I'm a little bit nervous, sorry. And I come before you today as a community member, a parent, and someone who has deep respect for the dedication of the educational staff at Frank Wagner Elementary. I once was a proud parent of Frank Wagner student. I served as a PTO president, and I was always proud to call it my home school. That pride hasn't faded, but now it lives alongside real concerns. As a parent and an engaged community member, I feel compelled to speak openly about the disparities I've witnessed. We cannot continue to allow inequity to persist for these students, they deserve better. When other parents ask me where my child attended school, I was often met with looks of pity, comments of surprise, reaction that no parent wants to experience, and certainly not something any child should ever feel. Despite that, my family stood proudly beside Frank Wagner. We held unwavering respect for these teachers, the staff who consistently show up for our children. Eventually, however, I made an incredibly difficult decision to transfer my child to another school. It was a personal choice made out of concern for my child's education opportunities and safety. It was not a reflection of the teachers whom I trust and admire, but a reflection of the systemic imbalance that exists between our district's elementary schools. Let me be clear, I believe in the teachers and Frank Wagner. I believe they are every bit as skilled and dedicated and capable as their peers across the district. What they lack is an equitable support. That is where I'm here today. I urge you as a district and a community to change the narrative. This is unacceptable. Frank Wagner is spoken about with judgment or seen less than. We must shift this precedent through action and investment. Frank Wagner teachers have supported my child from day one, their dedication has never been in question. But the challenges they face, particularly regarding behavioral support and equitable resource allocation, are real and ongoing. Let me share an example. A kindergarten class was denied library access for an extended period due to behavior of a few students, while the intent may have been perceived to get impacted and was punishment for all, many of whom may not have had access to books or home experience for checking out books elsewhere. This restriction has left a lasting impression on those children. Thankfully, after raising concerns, the school reinstated library time. But my child was overjoyed, but the damage had been done. This isn't an issue, this is or was an issue of inequity. And while eventually was resolved, it should have never have happened in the first place. Another example, now third grader experiencing music class for the first time, something her peers at other schools have had since kindergarten. While I'm thrilled, there was a music teacher that has finally been hired for Frank Wagner. I asked, why did it take nearly four years to provide this when others have had this from the beginning? In the time where digital learning is fundamental, Frank Wagner students went without technology-based curriculum available at schools like Frylands. The digital divide puts students at a disadvantage in a world that demands tech literacy. Such gaps in opportunity should not exist within the same district. I no longer am an active parent of Frank Wagner, but I remain an advocate for those students and families still there. I speak for the children who cannot yet voice their concerns and for the parents who feel unseen. Every child deserves more than just the minimum. When families leave, it's often peer leaders and helpers and role models who are taken out, leaving their classmates without those critical supports. Today, I stand before you, not just as a parent, but as a community member. I coach youth soccer, I help with basketball, I volunteer with the PTO, I attend board meetings, I stay informed and engaged. My child is lucky to have two involved parents, a strong network and support system, safe environment, but not every Frank Wagner child does. Frank Wagner is the highest-knit school in the district, it deserves the highest level of support. That means more good, more than good intentions, means targeted investment, thoughtful policy, and proactive leadership. I urge you to stand with the incredible staff at Frank Wagner. They are not asking for praise, they're asking for help, help to provide equitable education for every student in the district that they deserve. We cannot allow another year to pass with these discrepancies, sorry, disparities, continue, I apologize, where these disparities continue. Our students cannot afford it, they deserve better, and we have the power to make this happen. Thank you for your time and your commitment to all students in our district.
Thank you, Corinne. Casey? Hey, Casey, your name and your relationship to the school district?
My name is Casey Burkabyle, and I have a third grader at Frank Wagner in the dual-language program. Good evening, thank you for letting us speak today. I'm here to raise two concerns that are deeply affecting our students, the lack of elective options at Frank Wagner, and the ongoing issue of bullying and kids distracting from others' learning in class. First, elective classes are not just extras, they are what many students use to discover their passion, whether that's art, music, or technology. Our daughter is starting her fourth year at Frank Wagner and has yet to have full electives, yet from what other friends in the district have told me about their kids, they have, and they have for the entire time that they have been in school. Why, why this discrepancy with this one school? Right now, the limited choices leave many students disengaged. For some, electives are what keep them excited about coming to school and can even spark career paths. By offering full elective options, we can increase student motivation, creativity, and overall success. Second, bullying and kids causing distraction in class, we know it exists at every school, but what we don't always see are the consequences. Students who feel distracted, unsafe, unheard, or unprotected often stop thriving, and too often, they underperform or leave. As we just saw, families are making the painful decision to transfer their children to other schools because they believe their child will be safer and more supported elsewhere. That is not the legacy any of us want for Frank Wagner. Many families here may also not feel comfortable being a squeaky wheel and coming forward for how their kids are affected, since Frank Wagner serves many families where English is not their first language. I'm not here just to point out problems, I want to urge action. We need stronger anti-bullying programs that go beyond punishment and actually build empathy and accountability. We need to listen to student voices, take their concerns seriously, and create safe channels for reporting, as well as giving them a non-distracted classroom to allow for better learning. And we need to invest in expanding elective, so every student feels they have a place where they belong and something they look forward to in school. At the end of the day, these aren't just policies, they are about our children's well-being and the future. I ask the board to prioritize these issues so we can create schools that students don't want to leave, but instead feel proud of to be a part.
Thank you, Casey. Lizzie? Hi, Lizzie, your name and relationship to the school district?
Yeah, my name's Lizzie Brent Elizabeth is my legal name, and I have a third grader who is attending Salem Woods and used to attend Frank Wagner as of last week. Okay, so I'm writing both as a concerned community member, parent, and a mental health professional. I'm a licensed mental health counselor and a child mental health specialist. I also work at a neighboring school district as a mental health specialist. I feel compelled to raise concerns about the ongoing issues of bullying, inconsistent classroom management, and the critical need for stronger mental health and restorative justice supports across the Monroe School District. These issues are not abstract for me, they are deeply personal. My own daughter, along with several of her close friends, recently transferred out of Frank Wagner Elementary, due to repeated bullying and lack of effective intervention. As a parent, I cannot express how painful it is to watch your child lose their sense of safety and belonging at school. As a mental health professional, I recognize the long-term emotional academic consequences that this kind of experience can have on a child. The final straw was second day of school this year, she was assaulted twice in her classroom, and another student was drawing pictures, making fun of her appearance. This was things that were ongoing from last year, and we were willing to give it a chance, but by the second day of school, she was assaulted in her classroom twice. Teachers and staff at Frank Wagner are clearly working hard under increasingly difficult conditions. However, the lack of consistent classroom management structures and trauma-informed practices contributes to a learning environment where students who need support the most often fall through the cracks. Without clear expectations, relational safety, and the right tools, both educators and students are set up to struggle. In my professional experience, effective classroom environments are built on strong relationships, mental health support, and restorative approaches to behavior. These practices not only reduce incidents of disruption and harm, but also cultivate a school culture rooted in empathy, accountability, and community. Every student should feel like they belong, and that starts with systems that center their well-being. With that in mind, I respectfully urge the Monroe School District to consider the following, and I have other notes, so I might go a little off-script. So, expand mental health resources at Frank Wagner and District Y to ensure that every student has access to counseling, behavioral health support, and trauma-informed care. We have C-Mar in our community, why do not, why do they not provide school-based counseling? We have Compass Health Wise, I'd like to know if referrals are being made to them. I used to be the manager of the Wise program down the street, I don't remember getting any referrals from Frank Wagner. As I mentioned, I'm a mental health specialist at a neighboring school district. As far as I know and what I remember, there's only one of me in the Monroe School District. In my district, there are six people on my team. There's also others, Snohomish County Mental Health Services that we could tap into, and there's also a really wonderful program that I think you should look up called Strengthening Families. I also think that we should implement restorative justice practices that move beyond punishment and instead teach students how to take responsibility, repair harm, and build community. We need these to be evidence-based and data-driven and need to be tracked, because if they're happening, they're not making a difference. We need to strengthen professional development in the classroom, focus on equitable, culturally responsive, and trauma-informed practices that support both staff and students. Again, it should be data-driven and monitored to see if it's making a difference. And we need to commit to building a culture of belonging, where students of all backgrounds feel seen, heard, valued, and where families and community voices are included in shaping the school policy and practice. Frank Wagner is a diverse, vibrant school with so much promise. As a mental health specialist and a parent, I believe in the power of school systems to either uplift or unintentionally harm, unintentionally harm. Unfortunately, if student safety and belonging is not significantly addressed, Frank Wagner will continue to lose families and will experience lower enrollment rates. I'd like to thank you for your time, your service, and commitment to creating a safer and more supportive educational environment for all our students.
Thank you, Lizzie. Okay, we have Agenda Item 5.01, High School Curriculum Sex Trafficking Lesson Plan. This is the first reading, and we have Ms. Jennifer Murphy.
Okay, so hopefully you all received the lesson. So this is really in response to the RCW update that requires that we offer instruction on the dangers and prevention of sex trafficking, and it can begin as early as seventh grade, but we're gonna choose at this first juncture to offer it in our high school health class. And what we did was we took, in the guidance document from OSPI that was attached to tonight, is we looked at the Open Ed resources that are recommended by OSPI for the lesson, and we took that lesson and gave it to you. And so, a couple just things I want to clarify is, you'll look at, in the lesson that you were provided, it links to the National Science Education Standards, but I wanted to go over that it actually does cover our health, Washington State Health Standards, and they're related to safety. So, the safety standards that we're kind of looking at are evaluating strategies to prevent, manage, and escape unsafe situations, including sexual harassment, sexual assault, and exploitation, to analyze how violence, exploitation, and abuse impact health and identify strategies for seeking help or supporting others, and then demonstrate the ability to access valid resources and support related to, or sorry, the ability to access valid resources and support related to violence, exploitation, and abuse. So that's kind of, we already cover some of those safety standards in our violence prevention lessons already, but this is just specific to sex trafficking. The IMC Committee took a look at the lesson, the video, and the PowerPoint, and they unanimously wanted to move it forward to you. They're also gonna be looking at adding a middle school lesson, and we're gonna, I've asked Tanya Brink to reach out also to Monroe Police Department to see what's currently being discussed at the safety lessons related to this at the middle level, and if none, then we might be coming back to you with an additional lesson. Questions?
Yeah, I'm reading the RCW on this, and one of the questions that I had about this is, is it just a lesson that's required as a part of it? Because it says it needs to be provided instruction, but it's not very specific on what that looks like, and so I was curious about that, and the breadth of what we'd be offering.
Yeah, I mean, we already have a lot of safety lessons in terms of like affirmative consent, physical abuse, emotional abuse, and so this would be the next kind of layer to support students in making safety decisions regarding sex trafficking. I think a lot of students don't see it as something that could happen to them, and they don't realize how easily they can be caught up in it.
One of the questions I also had is, the materials that we already offer that kind of do touch on some of this, do they already fulfill what the RCWs are asking?
They don't, they don't specifically address the sex trafficking part. So that's why it's really only one lesson, because it does address the other issues, but it doesn't address that specifically.
So this is just one day, one lesson, we covered?
Yeah, it's a 50-minute lesson, I suppose they could extend it into being a two-day lesson, but yeah, it's intended to be covered in one day as part of the safety unit.
In which class?
Sorry, it would be high school health. Most students, we recommend they actually take it in their junior year, but most students take it in 10th or 11th grade. It's kind of got some mature content, so we would prefer for students to be juniors, but some 10th graders take it as well.
So here's a question, as a parent who has a running start student now, if they're not on campus for that, is there an issue with that? Because there are some students who are not on campus during their junior year or their senior year because they're off-campus with a running start, or they're off-campus with Snow Isle or whatever else.
Yeah, I'd have to talk to the counselors specifically, health is a graduation requirement, so it's either they're taking it through another form, or it's being waived in some way. We don't get a ton of waivers, so I'm assuming that they work with students to provide a different way for them to receive their health credit.
Okay.
But I could get that information.
I was just curious, because I'm not sure necessarily specifically, like, you know, Cascadia and Everett Community College are the two main schools that most of our students go to for that, and so, like, is that built into their curriculum, is it not, is that a requirement for them? Because I know that they have some different requirements being higher ed, so that was just curiosity, do we have a gap there?
Okay, I will find out.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you, John.
Yeah. Okay, Agenda Item 5.02, Policy 4210, Regulation of Dangerous Weapons on School Premises. This is the second reading, is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the revisions made to Policy 4210, Regulation of Dangerous Weapons on School Premises.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the revisions made to Policy 4210, Regulation of Dangerous Weapons on School Premises, discussion?
Where'd we land, or I guess I need to go through again, about, is this about bringing like pepper spray to like the football game or something?
Yeah, so Kelly will come up. We just needed a little direction from you all, if you wanted it to be okay at a game versus just, is the policy just for at school and?
In, in looking back at it, or looking over it again, I guess, kind of landed on, I like the language the way it is, in the revision that I proposed, it's still, it may not account for some of the after-hours type events like we had talked about, but I think it's still a better policy, because again, if somebody were to come on the premise, we're not sitting there asking for them to check it all, but if they're under the policy, at least, if they're, if it is found from a student standpoint, we would be able to hold on to it until the time that they leave the campus. Doesn't prevent them from still bringing it, doesn't prevent them from what, you know, their parents may want them to do, but while they're under the premise of the school itself, if they were at an event, I would still rather have either law enforcement, if they were there, security, or admin take care of whatever the issue might be, rather than to try and take things into their own hands.
Would our procedures be able to be more robust in that area as well? Is that something we could include into that, to not have to build that into the policy, but just put that into the procedure? Because that's a lot more moldable and usually more comprehensive than our policy portions are.
So the conversation last time, I think you were, you were out, was that this more directly relates to how I have dealt with it over the last year, we've had a couple of incidents where somebody brought it to campus, it was during normal school hours, and we just checked whatever the backpack or something was in, and at the end of the day, gave them the backpack and had them go home, because they were doing things after school, going fishing, doing some other stuff where the parent wanted them to have that with them. And so, we weren't necessarily, again, taking it away from them, confiscating it just while they're on that premise, allowing them to still do it. So, I wanted to make sure that the policy covered the practice that we're employing.
So walk me through a process, let's say a student comes in and they have, just because it's fun that it's in here, they have nunchucks because they go to a karate lesson after school, and they have them, or they go, they're going fishing, and they have a filet knife or a pocket knife, or whatever that is, what does that look like for them?
They would show up in the morning, check it in with somebody in admin or security, and we would secure that during the day, at the end of the day, when they finish their time at school, then have them leave the grounds with whatever that item was.
Okay.
And then how are students educated about this, that they're supposed to be doing this, and the list of what they can and can't bring without checking?
It could be, I mean, I don't know that all our students are reading the policies, I'm certain they're not, but hopefully if a parent is involved with that and they have concerns about those procedures, they're checking with either the administration at that school and saying, hey, what is the actual process, or what are the rules covering that particular item? And at least we have something to refer back to them and say, hey, this is what we were recommending.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Kelly. Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Agenda Item has passed 4 to 0. Agenda Item 5.03, Facility Fees for the 25/22 school year, this is the second school year, this is the second reading, is there a motion?
I moved that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the twenty twenty five twenty twenty six facility use fees.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves twenty five twenty six facility use fees discussion. Hey, Adam.
Hello. All right, so last time you had a few questions and I have some more information for you. This. Okay, so you were curious, um, our in district youth sports, you go to the second page. Um, so these are like our select teams, Boys and Girls Club, et cetera, what we took in last year from them, so sixty four thousand uh thirteen groups. Um, so we had a couple of groups that were a little higher. Uh, they had did a lot of use, one, one particular team was thirteen five. Uh, but for the most part, they're all around four to five thousand dollars a year that we're charging them in rent. And then for the other groups, so that's all the other groups out of district sports groups that aren't meeting that fifty or eighty percent minimum. Uh, we took on a hundred and about a hundred and thirty four thousand, about forty five thousand of that were church groups. And then we had one out of district soccer group that was thirty seven five. So pretty significant numbers there. Um, I wanted to mention, since we lowered the rates last year, we've seen about a fifty percent increase rentals. And actually go to the next slide, so uh sorry, jump the gun here. Um, so these are just some of our expenses that we see, and some of them are really hard to estimate, like utilities, you know, normally if if we'd had no after hours use or outside use, like our buildings would be unoccupied, so our lights would be off, our air conditioning would be turned off, uh, heating off, so threw a number at that, it was really hard to kind of come up with. And then we have other wear and tear, just field, like we were talking about earlier, field maintenance, repairs, uh, things we have to hire, uh, another one. So gym gym floor refinishing, we spent twenty six thousand last year. If we didn't have the outside use, we could probably cut that down to about fifteen thousand because I wouldn't need to do them every year. So just right there, it'd be like a ten thousand dollar savings. So I just wanted to kind of give you some idea of what extra expenses come of the facility's use. Any questions with that?
Um, just adding on to our previous conversation uh during the workshop about um some public comments about our fields not being maintained up to the standard that they were expecting. Um, shouldn't, I mean, arguably, these facility fees, a big expense should be maintaining those fields and getting them up to par. So I guess, are we charging too little or are we not allocating the income from them the right way?
Well, we're basically, I think, breaking even. Again, it's really hard to calculate this this side of it. Um, in my opinion, I I don't know that we should be making money off of youth sports or outside users because it is community space. My opinion is break even is about right.
No, 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 I'm not saying we should be making money, but um, well, we should be putting more into field maintenance and repair than ten thousand.
I mean, we that's fair, yeah, a lot of it we do ourselves, uh, it's just us spending extra time out there and I I feel like yeah, they are, our users are in one way or another kind of paying for it.
So our expected cost, if if this next year were similar, is about two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars?
Um, I think it'll be more, if we were to keep our rates the same, I think it would be more. Uh, a lot of our groups are going multiple seasons, they're increasing their number of teams. Um, one of the church groups is new, uh, they only were, I think, about twenty five hundred last year. I would imagine they'll be on par with the rest of the churches, which are around fifteen thousand a year. Um, our cricket group, they're they're outside, um, they're they're growing. I think we're gonna see more, I we're, I'm pretty confident we're gonna see more.
So on our, but not on our revenue, but first with our expenses, are we expecting the wear and tear to cost us about two hundred grand again this this next year?
I think about two hundred grand is probably about right.
And our revenue last year, total revenue from everything inside and outside was what?
Uh, I want to say it was.
One eighty?
Uh, I think it was one ninety.
So it is about a break even. And so if we have lowered the rates, but we've increased our our revenue because we've had more rentals because of that, is it still gonna be around two hundred thousand dollar revenue? Or is it, are we looking at probably a little bit more like two twenty five, two thirty?
We'll probably, yeah, bring in more revenue, but like you mentioned, the the expenses, the wear and tear will go up a little bit too.
Uh, this is a Sean or Brenda question, if we do end up making some money off of that, can we use that to reinvest back into sodding and things like that? Uh, those types of things, are we allowed to do those types of things? Obviously, again, it's not to make money, but if we have an extra five thousand, ten thousand dollars that we can say, hey, we need to repair this field, but we can have that set aside and allocated for that? Okay. Thank you.
Um, question, using the numbers that we are proposing for the next school year, oh, what would the total use fees look like for the in district youth groups? Does that go up or down?
Uh, so Jesse, if you want to pull up that other sorry, I gave them to him in two different ones. So all I did here was I took similarly sized districts, um, with the exception of admins, and I'll explain admins again. They already average with other or similarly sized districts to them. So that's why I like to put them in there because we really get a good, good idea of what other districts are charging. Um, so you can see on that last year, what we did was, so this is a civic indoor rate and then the civic outdoor rate, we use these rates for our in district youth sports. And the in indoor spaces kind of regionally went up quite a bit this year. So you can see, actually, if you go to either of those indoor yeah, um, you can see the average went up quite a bit from what we were charging last year. But the other areas, outdoor, and then the other categories are all pretty, pretty close to last year. Or I mean, they've gone up, but not as significant as the indoor. One thing, sorry to throw a wrench in it, um, I was gonna propose we take Lake Stevens out and replace them with Riverview because Lake Stevens is really difficult to average with. You can see they do it per per athlete and monthly charges and things like that. Um, if we were to move Riverview into the mix this year, that would lower the average by a couple dollars. So I was actually gonna consider making that part of the proposal.
Ri- with Riverview, is there, what is their student population, is that half of ours?
Around around three thousand.
Okay.
So what are the proposed numbers for this year?
Well, my proposed numbers would be to, it's up to you if you want me to add Riverview, it would be to add Riverview and take the average. So that would lower for the indoor, it would be a couple dollars less than that average for the rest of the categories. It would be very similar to what's proposed.
Do you already have their numbers?
I don't, I was looking that up earlier, um, because I'd noticed how much of it trying to figure out a way, because I know we don't want to raise our rates, I mean, we'd almost double um the elementary rate, and I know we don't really want to do that. So that was kind of a last minute idea.
Yeah, I think my position for in district sports for our youth that go to our schools and that live in Monroe, I don't want to increase that price at all. If anything, I'd love to see, even if it's a dollar or two, a decrease in that price. Because I think the more that we can allow those organizations to keep money, it just helps them pour that much more back into our students who so desperately need that. It's an amazing outlet and elective for uh the kids in our community. And it it serves them well through physical fitness, mental health, all of those things. So that was sort of the whole purpose in asking for the breakdown of the things, because I wanted to know how much lower can we really go? And still, you know, not be completely upside down in that, but allow those local organizations to keep that money. And then, you know, maybe the students pay less too, and it just opens the door wider to more students being able to participate in those, so.
Okay.
I know.
What about for the other categories? Should we, do you want to stick with the average or stick with this year's rates?
I think in the other categories that don't pertain to our youth in district, I think, you know, doing more of the average of what's there is fine. Right, the the main concern for me is our students and making sure that, you know, all of the families were already paying taxes and these buildings and these fields asking for bonds, asking, you know, for new levies to be renewed. And this is servicing our students, so I I would really, I mean, honestly, I'd love to see that price be zero for in district for youth sports and to have that money made up through some of those outside avenues by, you know, maybe bringing it up a little bit and using whatever the average is. So it's not too much, but we're still staying very much comparable.
Okay.
I think you're above average in some of those for the out of district youth sports. I think that's okay too.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, and some of them were lower than the average. I think it's okay to go at average or above.
So aside from in district youth, we'll go with the average and or whatever, yeah, whatever.
If it's already above, that's fine.
Stick with the average.
And if that allows us to have, if that allows us to give a break for our MSD students better, that's, that was, I think, I feel like this has been like a three year conversation that we've been trying to do this to help our kids, whether it's been for pony baseball or it's been for Bearcat football or whatever it is, uh, the basketball programs, we've we've talked to many of the coaches and the program leads for those. Um, and that has been, it feels like a moving target, but it's been something that we want. And that's, that's been overwhelming unanimous of our board, we uh over the last several years of how do we get these prices affordable? And I think our policy states that if it's, is it fifty percent of the roster enrollment is MSD students or more? Is that what we've said, how that, how we qualify that for local teams?
We've adjusted that, so if you're fifty percent or more and you do not cut, so you're a non competitive team.
Okay.
Um, but if you do cut, um, we've we've made it eighty percent, which is pretty on par with other districts.
Okay.
And it's been a a process, and I so appreciate that you've, the the Facilities Committee and your work in all of this, because I think that you've also done a tremendous amount of work um and heavy left just uh engaging with the community and ensuring that we're meeting those needs. So I just want to make sure that that's included.
Sure.
Thanks, Adam.
Yeah.
So actually, sorry, um, so what do you want me to do with the in district? Do you want me to just stick with the current rates or do you?
If you have in district rates that are above average, I think we can try and get them down below average if that's possible. If you have rates that are above, above for out of district, you know, keep them at average or if they're already above, I think it'd be good to get some some real data of Riverview as well, just because they are a neighboring district. I know they're not as big, but they're also King County, so that may make that wash a little bit. But it would be nice to see what our neighbor to the south looks like as well to help us say, do we have realistic numbers?
Do you want that this year or do you want me to have that for next year?
If it's possible to get it for this year, it'd be helpful.
Sure, another one, if you go to fees, Jesse, which is all the way on there, right? Um, so our custodial fee, so we have hired a a weekend custodian and we charge our users cost on that. And the other advantage of that is we're able to share them per site, so we save them a ton of overtime rate. It saved a lot of money for our users. Um, right now, when we do have to pay custodian overtime, they typically cost around fifty six fifty an hour. Right now, we're only charging fifty, and because that is a direct cost, I was, do we want to bump that up a little bit, go to that average?
Is that their pay rate or is that their their payroll cost to us?
Payroll cost to us. Right, yeah, 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 it's not just their pay rate, it's cost and benefits or rate and benefits.
So I, I mean, no matter what, I I think we don't want to be underwater, right? I mean, I can really speak for myself, so if we're lowering it, lowering the cost for in district sports, that means we need to either raise the costs somewhere. So that means out of district youth or out of district adult or adult, you know, leagues, um, that would have to increase.
Okay, yeah, we're definitely um, rates will go up a little bit um for all the other users.
I think one of the things for you is a is a metric, and and again, I totally echo what my colleagues are saying here that that I think that the 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 line you want to be looking for with this is, and I think we're, I don't want to speak for all the rest of the board members, but I think this is the the sentiment we've been expressing for a while is it has to be solid. We can't just be upside down over and over, we can't afford that.
Right.
But then where do we make savings for the students in these in these in these clubs that are our kids, that are our MSD kids, that are families of our taxpayers, that are, they're already paying for these facilities through their taxes. So how do we, how do we find those savings? And then where we still need to be able to make those evens, if that means we have to have a fee increase, then that goes to facilities that are outside of the Monroe community with outside of Monroe students.
Okay.
If that's possible, but then that was where you come back and go, okay, here's our projected revenue, here's our projected costs, or do we at least have a break even?
Okay.
I think that that's the healthy part, and is that representative of kind of where you guys are feeling as well?
Yeah, I'd just add, um, just given the feedback, like I mentioned, given the feedback about the fields, if we're only spending ten thousand, if we bump up to fifteen thousand, you know, and charge a buck eight for the adult leagues more or whatever it costs, because they expect the fields to be at a certain standard if they're written in over their leagues. And if we can add that into the cost and just predict that, I think it'd be better for everyone.
That's cheaper than um lawsuits for pothole issues when they twist their ankle.
And then, Adam, if you want it to be on the next, we have a special board meeting on Monday, so if you want to have it.
Yeah.
Or if you want to wait.
I can do that, yeah.
Thank you, Adam. Okay, there is a motion on the table, all in favor, raise your hand. The motion does not pass, thanks, Adam.
Muscle memory.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item six point zero five, we have approval of the Consent Agenda, is there a motion?
I'll move for that, though. I moved the Monroe School District Board of Directors, approve all items as listed and presented in the Consent Agenda dated September eighth, twenty twenty five.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items listed and presented in the Consent Agenda dated September eighth, twenty twenty five. All in favor, raise your hand. There we go, Agenda has passed, the motion passes four to zero. Agenda Item seven point zero one, we have superintendent update.
All right, hey, Jesse, would you mind putting that, the um Hanover uh PDF up, please? Thank you. Um, first, I want to thank you all for, every one of you, including Chuck, went to Park Place on the first day of school, Frank Wagner Elementary School and Monroe High School. Thank you for bringing the donuts, they're very happy staff members, I know. Um, I thought it was also nice to walk the Wagner um center property to get a picture of what a future Sky Valley could look like there. If today I was out at Frank Wagner Elementary, because it's the first day of kindergarten, the best day of the school year. And um, I I didn't see any anybody crying, so that's a good sign. But there's, it's really hard to open the milk up uh for the kindergartners. So if you want to come with me tomorrow, it's every day this week, I'll go and help them with the milk cartons. Our district could make a lot of money if we could figure out how to make the cartons so kids can open them, but that's always fun. Uh, so that was a blast. Uh, we are still working towards this notion of potentially getting a skill center here in Monroe. So right now, the feasibility study is still being worked on. Uh, a survey is going out now, uh, just just today, we tried to get it to our industry partners through the Chamber of Commerce. We also are going to get surveys out to our students, our families, and then the community members at large. That's going on in the entire county, so it's not just surveying Monroe uh families and students, but everyone to see if, do we need to add um a skill center somewhere, so definitely keep you posted as the um uh results come in there. Alongside this work, we've asked Hanover Research to help us with the uh C T E labor market analysis. And Darby and Andrew and I uh were part of a really good presentation uh last week when they shared the results. So Jesse, if you go to, let's see, page um seven, please. So they're, they're basically looking at the uh local labor market, they're looking at Snohomish County, and then they're looking at the Seattle metro area as well. And the goal is just for us to uh find the career clusters that have the strongest growth and the greatest demand, along with livable wage field, so that that can inform the course offerings uh that we're doing, really pre K twelve. So the jobs all fall into one of those sixteen career clusters. Um, as you could guess, health science and I T, those kinds of things are coming up really high for us in our area. But this framework is how is how we can compare growth and demand across those particular sectors. So page thirteen, Jesse, thank you. So here's, this is kind of an interesting graph, this is what it looks like in Snohomish County. So if you look at the um growth rate is shown vertically and annual job openings. So if you look at the growth rate is shown vertically, and annual job openings horizontally. And then the bubble size that you see there is overall demand. So if you look at like, health sciences, the pink one up in the upper right quadrant, IT, STEM, and human services, those are all growing really quickly. But the biggest bubbles represent more jobs overall, even if they're slower to, to grow. So that's in business, construction, and manufacturing, so that's what it's looking like in Snohomish County. The next one will show that, let's see, the Seattle metro area, so expands a bit, so if you go to page sixteen, Jesse, and I'll share this report with you, so you can look at it at a deeper level. So if we kind of zoom out to the Seattle metro region, which would, which would be Snohomish, King, and Pierce Counties, the picture shifts a little bit. Information technology and health sciences really stand out, both are growing faster than average and have pretty large demand bubbles, if you will. And this matters to us, obviously, because our graduates, when they leave, will, will work regionally and not just within our, our own county. Seventeen, one more, Jesse, then that'll be the last one. This is a slide that kind of pulls it all together for us, so, so you can see that information technology, the demand is, is very large, over a hundred thousand, and then health science as well, and then the ones on the left are, they, they show strong growth, but not at the same demand level. So this basically confirms for us that, and this aligned with what we're thinking, that information technology and health science are, are very powerful career pathways for our students in terms of living wage and also opportunity. So next steps for us, Hanovers, take a look at, and Darby or Andra, I cannot remember, I know that we're gonna have them look at information technology and health science. Weren't they also looking at construction? Was there one more in there, too? Yeah, that's right, so sorry to put you on the spot, and there may be one more as well, it might even be the STEM one. But they're taking a look at five of those career clusters, and then drilling down into actual, what are the actual jobs within those career clusters? So again, with a goal as, as, as per our strategic plan, to figure out how we can best help our students be, be future-ready. And sometimes this means a, a college pathway, and sometimes it means just making sure that they're, they have an industry-recognized certification along with their high school diploma, so, so we have a little bit more information than we had at our last meeting, we'll just keep working with them. Darby, I think I sent you an email about this, or it was in my superintendent update, we're moving along really well with our Evergreen Hospital really wants to partner with us with CNA program, so, yeah, we're excited about that. We'll probably have you, Darby, do a, just a presentation specifically about progress in that particular area. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, moving on to agenda item eight point zero one, we have board reports and or comments.
I'll jump in. It was awesome for the first day of school, especially to embarrass my daughter in the middle school, and my son was not embarrassed of me at the high school, it was really cool. But just to see students' excitement, teacher excitement, I know the beginning of school year is always a lot of fun because of the the energy that's, that's going on in general, you know, the different schools that we have, seeing our district moving in the right direction. A lot of the, the positives that we saw that were mentioned in the workshop that we had earlier today. I feel like you see that every single school year, moving in the right direction, and that's an exciting thing, not that we don't have things to work on, we still have many things to work on. But to know where we are and where we've come from in the last almost five years that I've been on the board, has been night and day different. I know it's not the case of everybody, even the public comments, I'm sorry about that, and those are things that we can continue to look into and work on for all of our students, and that's a horrible beginning of the school year for some kids, and unfortunately, that is the case for some students. But in general, to see a lot of kids moving in the right direction, and a lot of positive feedback that I've heard from staff, I've heard from students, I've heard from other family members. Those are great things, and so that was just a really exciting thing to see that, and to see staff moving in the right direction, PLCs getting off to a right start. Those types of things are also very encouraging. I did have a question for Superintendent Woodward, relating to the, your report as well. I was wondering, as we're moving in the direction of, you know, excited about the, the certification programs and the things that we're doing with the CT program moving forward. Do we have a target number of certifications that we're trying to look for students to be able to get within this first year? Like, is there, is there a certain, certain ones, like I know, obviously, the partnership with the, with the hospital for CNA, are there other ones? What are we looking at, is it three or four, is it five or six, what are we looking at for the, the certification process that we can get for students as they walk through the CT program?
So the hope, well, at least one more for February, because we're on kind of the, we're, we're basically on this timeline where the course catalogs and kids are registered in February, so our goal is see the CNA program, and then try to accelerate this as we go, as we get more information from Hanover and other places. The, the other piece is quite frankly, whether or not we, we can accelerate that greatly if we end up getting funding for a skill center here, and just automatically, we could add three to four in, in, in one year that way.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay, awesome, thank you, guys.
Okay, I'm gonna try to keep this short and sweet today. It was just amazing to go and interact with all of our incredible educators at the schools on the first day of school, to see Frank Wagner put in so much care to put up signs from the teachers to the students, and to sign every single one of them themselves, telling our students, you know, you can do this, you've got this, you're amazing, you're awesome. That was just a really awesome way to start off the school year, along with all the smiling faces. And just a follow-up for the FFA, they competed at the Evergreen State Fair, and I was able to mention a couple of them at the last board meeting, but Lindsay Butcher was kind enough to email me a list of the other things, and unfortunately, I didn't get it in time for the last board meeting, but so I'm gonna read this off this time. So we had our veterinary science career development event that took place, they took third place overall as a team, which was amazing. You have Haley Hartsell, she got the champion Holstein and outstanding exhibitor for dairy, and she was the one who showed us her cows and let me lay on her cow. And then Hannah Hartsell, she had a champion horse. This name, please forgive me, I know I'm gonna get this wrong, but I'm gonna try. Soraya Crane, she got reserve champion and horse, which is second place, so congratulations to you. Erin Ridout, she got champion fitting and showing, she participated in the round robin for poultry, she got best of show chicken. And if I remember, she got reserve for best in show for her rooster, I think that might be right. But congratulations to Erin, and she was also the one who kindly showed us around and answered a ton of our questions. And then our landscaping FF eighteen, they got best in show at the fair. So a huge congratulations to our students who put so much work into preparing for all of that. I mean, some of them, months upon months, preparing their animals, practicing with them, getting everything just right, and going and leaving it all out there in competition. We are so very proud of you, and very, I'm very excited for this school year, our sports kicked off, we had varsity volleyball games, C-team JV, we had basket, not basketball, football, and then tennis started, girls soccer started. I don't think, no, swim didn't start, there are a couple other ones, I was a little bit out of it, I was under the weather last week. But I am, I am all for getting out there and rooting on our Bearcats, and I would encourage anybody else who has some time and they want a wonderful night out with their family to go and do this.
Okay, I loved also being able to tour the middle school and high school on the first day, and embarrass my own children, two in middle school and one in high school, absolutely necessary to do that. Again, to Molly's point, really great to see kids out there and having fun and competing in sports and wearing orange and black up at the high school, if you have a chance, just go hang out. I see, I saw so many parents who have already graduated their students like years ago, they just come and support students. They said, I asked them, like, what are you still doing here, your kid graduated a couple years ago, are you free now? They said, well, we just love coming and supporting Bearcats, like, we know some of their older siblings, and it's so cool to be able to have those connections. I thought that was really special and something that's super unique to our one high school community. And I have nothing else to share, other than really glad to be Bearcat, really glad to be a part of the Monroe School District, and thank you so much for those presentations today. And it is six PM, tonight's meeting is adjourned.